There he is.
Oh. No, it's... Why am I keep getting...
We waited for you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Sorry for the delay.
Planning Commission for the City of Wilsonville for Wednesday, December 12th, 2018 is now in session. Will the clerk call the roll?
Chair Greenfield.
Here.
Vice Chair Postman.
Here.
Rob Heberlin.
Here.
Peter Hurley. Cameron Mesba.
Here.
Phyllis Mellon.
Here.
Simon Springall. Thank you.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission. Regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a public, formal public hearing tonight, we have no public hearings scheduled. Therefore, if any member of the audience would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand so that we may hear from you now. Seeing none, we'll move on to consideration of the minutes of the November 14th meeting. As distributed, are there any changes or additions to be made? Hearing none, the minutes are accepted as distributed. Before we move into our work session, I'll call on our Director of Planning to recognize one of our staff.
Thank you, Chair Greenfield, members of the Commission. I'm Chris Namtsu, City's Planning Director. And I guess this week, I'm also the Community Development Director. So, doing both now and having fun doing it. It's exciting times. But I want to just take a moment to recognize Ms. Bateshell and her team for winning the Oregon American Planning Association Award for 2018 for Citizen Engagement. Obviously, this Commission is intimately familiar with the process and the project and all of the things that the staff has done to try to engage the community around the Town Center project. This was a very well-deserved award that I was proud to sit in the front of a room full of the state's planners at the American Planning Association Oregon Chapter in Bend several weeks ago, where Miranda and Jennifer Scola received this award on behalf of the City of Wilsonville and this project. So, it's a true feather in the cap of Miranda and an indication of her vision on this project. And I told her that I'd be happy to break this cycle because no other project will ever be able to reach the heights and that I'll be resetting a much more reasonable bar on future projects. It won't quite go as far as this one has. But it's been fun to be a part of, the creativity that the team exuded. I mean, even, it was just really fun to be on the cutting edge of citizen engagement. And obviously, we take this issue very seriously in this room as part of what we do on a daily basis and on a monthly basis. And to be recognized for those efforts is a really cool thing. So, I'm just very proud of you and your work and the team's work. I mean, things like, you know, trivia nights and just incredible, a number of different diverse events and activities that came about. The Block Party comes to mind. I mean, these were just fun to just be a part of all of that. And now, we have to get a great plan approved, which I never like receiving an award before the plan is approved because now the true pressure is on. But we hope to get to the finish line with a great plan as well. That is our intent. But good job. And Chair Greenfield just wanted to be sure that I took a moment to recognize the great work of the staff on that. So, thanks.
Well, I want to say thank you. And I feel very honored to hear that. But really, it truly was the work of the full team. And I'm very thankful for the team that we have, both in the staff as well as in the leadership of the city. By no means could this project or the team on the project do all of that type of innovative work if it wasn't supported by our Planning Commission and by our City Council and by the budget that was put forth on the project. So, when we said, "We need a little bit more" in order to reach additional members of the community that we weren't hearing from and to go out to them and go into apartment complexes and neighborhood meetings, we were told that we could do that. So, I thank the leadership, particularly from the gentleman sitting next to me and from the community at large for showing up. They came and they provided a lot of comments and they filled out questionnaires and answered questions every month at the library and online. And we would not have been able to do it without the community showing up. So, I'm grateful to all of you and to the entire community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to disempower Mr. Namtsu, but I had commented to Miranda that I hope this level would set a pattern for our future plan.
None of this lower bar stuff, you know? Would also be appropriate to recognize Mr. Namtsu as he transitions to the position of Community Development Director for the city. I don't think that we're going to see a tremendous change, except that he moves to a corner office. And he's going... He's still going to be very much present in our business.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Then we do move on to our single item in the work session this evening, which is consideration of the Basalt Creek Comprehensive Plan and the Transportation System Plan Amendments. And Ms. Bateshell will present.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Again, my name is Miranda Bateshell, Planning Manager with the City of Wilsonville. And with me, I have Kim Riebel, Associate Planner with the City, and Scott Manser from DKS. As you will recall, we adopted the Basalt Creek Concept Plan in August of this year, which was very exciting. And the next step in implementing that concept plan or getting the concept plan fully recognized in our policies is to adopt Comprehensive Plan Amendments, which, as you'll recall, in the IGA that we have with the City of Tuolton and Metro and Washington County, we are scheduled to do by May of 2019. When we came to you with the concept plan, we initially brought some tentative language. We decided to table that discussion until after the concept plan was adopted and promised we would come back to you. So, here we are. I have, Kim is going to go ahead and go through the Comprehensive Plan Amendments that are proposed in front of you in your packet. And then Scott is going to walk through for you the amendments to the Transportation System Plan that will essentially put this concept plan into place. And so, with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the team.
All right. Thank you, Miranda. Good evening, Chair Greenfield and the Commission. As Miranda said, I'm Kim Riebel, Associate Planner with the City. Miranda really highlighted most of the reasons why we are looking at these Comprehensive Plan Amendments now. Some of it, as she mentioned, is a requirement as a part of the IGA. The other piece to it is, you know, really taking a look at this map. And, you know, we have this conceptual idea of what this area will be in the future. Amending the Comprehensive Plan right now really allows us to take some of those key elements that are central to the concept plan and note them in the Comprehensive Plan, you know, just to give them somewhere to live while we, you know, consider, you know, what steps we need to take next in, you know, realizing the vision for this area. So, you know, some of those elements, this map down here is the land use map. That is a part of the concept plan. Putting the proposal we have for amendments will flush out some of these land use categories a little more closely than what we currently have there. So, the first key part of the amendments relate to the part of the Comprehensive Plan that lists areas of special concern. This is really where we can translate that geography of the concept plan into our Comprehensive Plan. So, there's two areas. The area generally more to the east is what is defined as the Basalt Creek Planning Area. Area N is called the West Railroad Planning Area. It's kind of confusing that we're both really a part of the Basalt Creek Study. But there are reasons that we've separated these two areas into separate areas of special concern. The reason being that most of the concept planning work was really focused in Area M. That's where we have more robust recommendations for future land use and transportation plans. Area N, there's some more challenges that were identified in the concept planning process. So, what the text amendments do for Area N is acknowledge those challenges, many of which are environmental, as well as ownership constraints in the area. And it provides some very general language identifying those constraints and future study as the area grows, particularly future growth in Coffee Creek area. That might extend infrastructure and at that time, you know, identifying that further study would be needed to assess the costs of even making that area developable. As for Area M, there's, most of the amendment focuses on that area. And what the amendment proposes to do is identify the key land use categories that were shown on the map in the previous slide. So, really defining what those are in the Comprehensive Plan for the area, making a link between the transportation improvements that were identified in the Basalt Creek Transportation Refinement Plan, as well as just identifying some other objectives for the area, such as ensuring that natural resources are protected, that there are pedestrian and bicycle connections made, and that there is a plan for transit service in this area in the future, given that it will be another employment area in the city. It also talks about one of the recommendations that was made in the concept plan, you know, potentially the idea discussed of a form-based code, such as what was adopted for Coffee Creek. You know, really acknowledging that, you know, in the future, that is an implementation piece that we would want to consider in this area. So, Areas M and N will be added to the map. That is within the Comprehensive Plan. And the Area M, the Basalt Creek area, would also be added to our Comprehensive Plan map as an industrial category, along with the Coffee Creek area to the south. The other key piece to this amendment is the addition of four implementation measures within our industrial section of the Comprehensive Plan. And these implementation measures really just seek to connect some of the bigger ideas that came out of the concept plan and acknowledge them in our Comprehensive Plan. So, this includes language supporting the encouragement of high-growth, high-tech industries, some language that supports smaller-scale craft industrial development types that uses defined within the Area M language. But what these are, kind of smaller-scale uses, like a bicycle manufacturer or distillery brewery, something of that nature. And then also, some language that would support ensuring that we have active green spaces in the industrial areas. And this is similar to, you know, purchase we've tried to take as well in Coffee Creek and making sure that just because it's an industrial area, we still do want to focus on providing trails and green spaces throughout as the area develops. So, Miranda mentioned, this is one piece in this process of moving from the concept plan through the Comprehensive Plan and meeting our legal requirements. Some other pieces to that are that we are currently working with Washington County to amend our urban planning area agreement. And that will actually give us the Comprehensive Planning Authority within the Basalt Creek area, as well as acknowledging that the West Railroad area is also within our future planning area. We anticipate that that will be completed in April of 2019. We also, and we'll get into this a little more in a couple of minutes, seek to update the TSP to take those projects that were identified in the Basalt Creek Transportation Refinement Plan and make sure that those are reflected in our TSP. And this is also important because we want to make sure that as we amend our UPAAA, that we are consistent with what Washington County has in their TSP as well. And then we'll also be working on putting together TPR findings in coordination with ODOT. And those will be something that we have ready prior to Comprehensive Plan Amendment adoption. So, with that, before we move into the TSP discussion, we want to open the floor for any questions you might have on these particular text amendments to the plan.
Just a quick question, and it's something I'm trying to get my head wrapped around this whole craft industrial area, which I think is a really interesting concept. In terms of the planning, and it says that it's 20% residential use. And so, I'm just trying to understand. So, I kind of get the concept is, you know, you'd have your workspace maybe underneath or something, you'd live above. But is this, are we going to have to, when we're talking about maybe form-based codes or something else, are we going to have to craft something? And you reuse the word. Something specific for this area, do you think? I guess I'm kind of looking future-wise, you know? Yes, we have the form-based code that works pretty well in the Coffee Creek. But would we be looking for something like that here also? And would that help the development of this area? I'm just kind of...
Right. So, that is why we do propose the language about exploring a form-based code. One thing that form-based codes can do that we don't really have in the Coffee Creek area because it is a little more restricted, being a regionally significant industrial area. But they do provide a little more flexibility in uses. You know, certainly, the Comprehensive Plan and that 20% will kind of set the bar for what could happen in that area. We don't, with our development code now, have, within our industrial classification, a way to really, you know, support that. So, I think that would require some additional amendments down the road to really help facilitate that type of development. I don't know if there's anything else...
Yeah, I would only add a couple of things. And one is to note that it's called out here as less than 20%. And so, I don't think we anticipate requiring 20% or even that it might even approach that 20%. Part of what we want to do was be somewhat reflective of what's happening out in that area right now in terms of people who both live on the property and have businesses on the property and that there are some uses that would work really well together there, especially given the small footprint of the parcels that were in that specific area. And it would kind of blend well with the residential that will be to the north into Tuolton. But we modeled very few residential units there in that area, in the craft industrial, but just enough to be able to capture some opportunity for live-work space. And also, because it was of interest to the Commission and the Council here in Wilsonville. We do anticipate that we will need to look at, during the next step, so once we've adopted Comprehensive Plan designations, is to look at whether or not this craft industrial would be allowed under our existing zoning code, the way it's written for industrial, or whether we would need additional amendments. And it's likely that we would probably need to do some type of additional amendments and look at whether it is achievable through the form-based code or something else. And so, that would be a follow-on item once we have sort of the guidance within the Comprehensive Plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question? And this may be for you, but also for Mr. Hammond as well. Did we get a Luba determination? And is that affecting anything that we're doing right now?
So, Luba made a determination on the Metro decision when Metro arbitrated the dispute between Tuolton and Wilsonville in favor of the entities, so not in favor of the landowners. There is still a pending Luba case focused on Tuolton's concept plan. And we have intervened in that, but that's geared towards them. So, we are proceeding forward with our process now that we've separated...
Doesn't change our timelines or in your plans. We're not expecting in the next month or two, we got to go a different direction.
No.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
How many properties currently in what will be the craft industrial area satisfy that description?
That currently have business on their residential property. I think it's only a couple at this point. I'd have to actually count. I'm aware of two. I'll put it that way. I'm aware of two at this time.
Only, it looks like there's maybe five to six parcels.
Underneath that designation. Because those are very long parcels. So, as you'll remember, really only the very frontage of those parcels along Boons Ferry Road is developable. Most of the parcels is within the Basalt Creek wetland area.
So, we're really talking about prospective development?
I believe that when we looked at acreage, the craft industrial only adds up to about five acres. So, it's a very small amount. But given that limitation in terms of developability of those parcels, it felt like having more flexibility for them would be very useful, particularly giving surrounding uses too.
So, I've got a question in terms of the implementation measures versus the designations in Area M for areas of special concern. It appears that the implementation measures, 1, 2, and 3, I'll say loosely align with the high-tech employment district, the craft industrial, and the light industrial districts. Is that, was that kind of the intent of the way those are set up? That implementation measure 4.1.3K aligns with the high-tech employment district?
That is correct.
Okay.
And part of that was because that's not something we've ever really called out in our, in planning documents prior, but was of interest to the Commission and the Council. And so, we wanted to make sure we had an implementation measure that helped to direct future steps in trying to implement that type of district.
Okay. So, that being the case, I guess my question is more centered around the high-tech employment district itself, where the description of implementation measure 413K varies in terms of the content and the wording on the high-tech employment district, where the implementation measure talks about advanced manufacturing, corporate and professional services, healthcare and medical. But the employment district description talks about jobs in warehousing, manufacturing, and high-tech. And I just, I wasn't sure specifically on the warehousing side if it made sense in coordination with the implementation measure to be talking about warehousing being in the high-tech district. Is that really an area of focus that we want to put into the areas of special concern?
We could definitely work on the verbiage there to make warehousing less prominent. We did, when we modeled the types of buildings that go in kind of high-tech industrial areas, there is a small component of warehousing typically as part of the overall development of a sort of larger campus or site. And so, there is a small percentage of warehouse actually modeled within that development type, but it is not the primary building type. So, I think working on that verbiage to make it more clear and tie those two together would be, is good. That's a very good observation, and we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, especially with, you know, warehousing being the first thing that's being said. It leads me to believe that that's the focus of a high-tech industrial area. Yeah.
I have a question which is, I guess, related. Implementation measure 413C favors capital-intensive rather than labor-intensive industries within the city. Could you elaborate on that distinction?
So, that is an existing implementation measure that's already in our Comprehensive Plan?
Yes. Yes. I'm not quite clear about the distinction.
Oh, just in terms of what it means?
Yes.
We could probably have different interpretations of this around the table.
Yeah, I do know. I'd want to go back and look at that one. That came out of the Goal 9 Economic Opportunities Analysis Work that the City adopted regarding industrial and commercial lands. So, that specific implementation measure came out of that work. It's probably about 10 years, 10 years ago. So, the EOA describes it in pretty good detail, if I recall correctly. And I think I would want to go to that document, pull that description, and then we can bring that back in a little bit clearer. I don't want to take a guess at it right off the top of my head, but I know we have an answer for that.
Then I note later on in the implementation measures, M 413M, encourage new development, new industrial development that contributes to employment districts with a high density of jobs and a range of employment opportunities. Is there conflict between that and the other implementation measure? This is say, what is our view of job density, of ideal job density in this area?
So, one of the, in this 4.1.3M, was geared towards the idea that there is... So, one of the, in this 4.1.3M, was geared towards the idea that there is a lot of warehouse and distribution currently in the city. And part of the desire for the high-tech and some of the other industrial that was placed in this area was to have opportunity for other employment types and things that would offer higher job densities. Often warehouse distribution doesn't have, provide very many jobs per square foot. So that was the intent of this measure, is for us to look at opportunities to provide more jobs within the city and be efficient with the land that we do have in our remaining employment areas. So that's the intent behind this measure. On initial read, I didn't see them as conflicting, but without having all of the background knowledge on the Goal 9, I'd like to go back and have us take a look at that information to see whether or not they actually do conflict. And if they do, then it might be that we will need to revisit 4.1.3C and bring that to your attention when we bring it back to you. And we can provide that information by email in the interim so that you have it sooner.
What are the implications for our calculation of trips in our system planning?
Yeah, so, I don't know, I don't think Scott's necessarily talking about that today. He's talking more about the amendments to the TSP. But we did do traffic modeling. DKAS did traffic modeling for the Basalt Creek Concept Plan and for the Transportation Refinement Plan. And for both of those, we modeled these employment types. And so we looked at these types of buildings. We looked at actual buildings on the ground to see, for that type of high-tech industrial cluster or an industrial area, what are the kinds of buildings we envision going in there? And what's the mix of employment types? Some of it's office space, some of it's manufacturing, some of it's warehouse. We translated that into total square footages and then looked at the trips, the number of jobs and the trips that would be associated with that. That was part of the concept planning process to ensure that the land uses through Tuolton and Wilsonville could accommodate, that the system could accommodate the trips that we were looking at. And so we looked at that, and we had done the work with the Basalt Creek Transportation Refinement Plan to generally know the number of trips that we should be planning for in the Basalt Creek Planning Area. And so we stuck to that and used that information to prepare the concept plan. So, the trips with these land uses should be consistent, or are consistent with the plan, and we wouldn't be going beyond that. In addition, we'll be doing the transportation planning rule analysis with ODOT, which will be actually taking that analysis and doing findings with the state to ensure performance in this area is consistent with what they expect, given the proximity to the interchange. So, we'll be doing all the analysis we will need to be doing on the transportation side to be consistent with these policies.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commission. I'm Scott Manzner with DKAS Associates, and I'll walk you through kind of the process for the Basalt Creek, or for the TSP amendment and some of the components of the amendment. So the first slide I wanted to kind of walk you through is, you know, what is a transportation system plan? And that's the kind of abbreviation there for TSP, and why does it need an amendment at this time? So first, you know, what is a TSP? TSP is really the city's vision for the long-term vision for the transportation system and combining land use and transportation, and looking at how the future, over the next 20 years, will look for the transportation system. And, you know, one of the other important components of a transportation system plan for cities and counties in Oregon is, it helps you qualify for transportation funding. It needs to be part of your TSP amended, adopted plan in order to qualify. And so, in Basalt Creek, that's one of the important components, is the coordination with the county, ODOT, and all the different players, and looking at funding in the future. Also, it's important to kind of keep current with changes in the state, regional, and local transportation system. And as, I'm going to go through a lot of changes just in the two and a half years since we went through the process of amending the TSP. The city's done a lot of improvements to the transportation system, including bicycles and pedestrians, and we'll go through that. So, again, just trying to stay up with all the changes that are occurring in the system. And then finally, it's important, it was part of the intergovernment agreement that, between Tuolton, Washington County, and the city, that the city would amend their TSP to include the transportation improvements identified in the Basalt Creek Plan. So that's kind of the reason we're here, the main reason. And as I talk about some of the changing local conditions, obviously, as I mentioned, and as Miranda and Kim went through the changes with the Basalt Creek Concept Plan, but also there's been some other, other changes in the city's system. One of those was the adoption of the Boons Ferry, Brown Road to Boons Ferry connector. If you remember, in the prior TSP, or in the current TSP, there was two different alternatives that were evaluated, and the city went through some alternative analysis and worked with the Planning Commission, the council, and the council adopted, and selected a preferred alternative at Fifth Street. So, we're going to go ahead and make that change since that was completed. Also, the city's worked with the county for jurisdictional transfers on Garden Acres, Clutter Road, and Advance Road to 60th for part of the area that was brought into the urban growth boundary for the Meriding Creek Middle School. This is the general project schedule for the TSP amendment. We're here today for the, kind of get you up to speed in this work session for the TSP amendment parts of this project. And then we'll come back to you in February for the official Planning Commission hearing. Then we'll go to the council in March and April for council adoption of the TSP amendment. So I'm going to walk you through some of the concept plan required amendments, as well as some of those other local changes, as I go through. So the first project that we need to add is the extension of the Basalt Creek Parkway. So you can see this is Project 1. So we're going to be adding that to our project mapping and our project list. It's going to be referenced as RE14. RE stands for roadway extension. That will be basically a new extension from Graham's Ferry Road to Boons Ferry Road. And these are projects that are expected, we say financially constrained, they're expected to be funded within the city's planning horizon. The next project is the Basalt Creek Trail Projects. There's two projects identified. There, this piece running along, I think it's the west side of the canyon. So it's, this is called the Basalt Creek Canyon Trail. We've identified that as Project LT02. There was a second trail identified within the I-5 easement to run along the west side of I-5. And that trail project was identified as LT03, for local trails, what LT stands for. So the next set of projects, Project 3 is to widen. With the addition of the Basalt Creek Parkway, that will add additional traffic in this area. So we are going, recommending a project consistent with the TRP, the Transportation Refinement Plan, to widen Boons Ferry Road to five lanes from Basalt Creek Parkway to Day Road. And again, that is a financially constrained project. Project 4, widen Graham's Ferry Road to three lanes. This is a segment starting at Basalt Creek, I'm sorry, starting at Basalt Creek Parkway, heading south down to Day Road. And it's to basically make that, make urban improvements to include three travel lanes, or one travel lane each direction, a left-turn lane, and urban improvements for bike lanes and sidewalks. The project is RW, which stands for Road Widening 05. And then Project Number 5, Boons Ferry 95th, one of the projects identified, this is SI, so spot improvement. Project 08 was looking at some access management and improving the operations at the Boons Ferry and 95th Avenue intersection. And that was to limit some of the access to the properties on the east side of Boons Ferry to improve capacity on Boons Ferry Road. These are two projects. Those first five that I went through, those are all, again, identified as financially constrained and are expected to be funded within the city's planning horizon of the transportation plan. These two projects are just identified, they are not financially constrained, so they're expected sometime outside of our planning horizon, but we still want to show these as desired projects down the road. Number 6 is the extension of Basalt Creek Parkway to the east over I-5. And that was identified in the Basalt Creek Plan. And Project 7 is the Day Road Overcrossing. It's an extension of Day Road east of Boons Ferry that would travel over I-5 and would connect somewhere to Ellingson Road. And right now, you can kind of see, it's just a dotted line on the map, but there's more analysis to be determined to find, to determine the final location. Again, those are both unfunded projects, but planned projects. Any questions so far on those? All right, I'll keep going. Other general amendments, so these are just general, I'm sorry. So there was one other project that was identified, dual southbound right-turn lane. So this is I-5. This is the I-5 exit ramp that connects to Boons Ferry, the Boons Ferry-Ellingson interchange. This is an additional project called SI07, spot improvement, and the intent is to add a second southbound right-turn lane. So today at that, on that southbound approach, you have one left-turn lane, you have a through-left-turn lane, and a right-turn lane. So this would add four approach lanes to increase capacity at the interchange ramp terminal.
Before we leave this, actually, I should have asked before we came to this page, the I-5 easement trail, when did that enter our picture?
Yeah.
Yeah. During the concept planning process, one of the items that was discussed, I believe this came from either, I believe it was a joint council meeting. It evolved with the councils to recognize there's, if you'll recall, there's a lot of trees between, currently when you're driving on I-5, between Tuolton and Wilsonville, you see sort of, there's a lot of those, there's a really nice grove of trees in an area that creates a distinction between the two cities. And there's area there that is, that ODOT has property on. And the idea was that there could be a potential connection there for bikes and pedestrians in order to travel between the two cities. There is some topography change there, so there would need to be more work done to assess whether or not that could be a complete, whether that connection makes sense and would be a complete connection on how it might be designed. But there was recognition that because there are the nice, there's a nice grove of trees there, that it could make a potential, provide an additional access point for bikes and pedestrians because there is some limited sort of north-south connection points. That's where it evolved from.
Where is ODOT on this?
That's a partner that we would still have to work with on. But they've been, they've participated in the concept planning process and didn't say anything about the trail project being an issue.
Thank you. And then Project 8, or Project 9, we referenced as RE04. That is the Brown Road to Fifth Street connection. And that is, again, that was adopted by the council, that alignment. And so we're going to go ahead and make that change while we're making the other changes with, for the Basalt Creek Plan. That project is currently being designed and planned for construction in the near future. Other general amendments, I mentioned, there was three roadways that have transferred from Clackamas County to the city of Wilsonville. The first is Garden Acres Road from Day Road down to Clutter Street, as well as Clutter Street from Graham's Ferry to Garden Acres. And then the final one is 60th Avenue right along, I'm sorry, Advance Road up to 60th Avenue adjacent to the Meriding Creek Middle School. So all those facilities have changed. So we've updated the mapping, showing those now as under city of Wilsonville jurisdiction. And there is one segment that we've changed. We updated the functional classification of two roadways. We've changed, in the prior transportation system plan, we had Garden Acres as a minor arterial, and it was this segment here. And through the last TSP amendment, that segment was removed. And what we're doing at this time, and we actually replaced that with the Garden Acres extension. So that was really put in place, but it, the classification was not updated at that time. It was remained as a collector, and we really want that as an arterial roadway, a minor arterial. So, the segment of Garden Acres from Day Road to Clutter, and Clutter Road from Garden Acres to the future Kinsman extension to the south, would be changed from collectors to minor arterial. So I have, just to go through a few, just mapping cleanup since the last amendment. Really, we're just going through some of the roadways that haven't been built since the last amendment, and I'll just go through those. So Kinsman Road from Barber, maybe you probably drive this, but Kinsman Road from Barber up to Beckman. So that's completed. So we're showing that now as being completed. Barber Road from Kinsman to Villaboa, oop, sorry about that. So that, the segment, the bridge and the completion of that, that segment, to Montebello Drive. Canyon Creek Road from Town Center up to Beckman is now fully complete. Barber Street from Coast to Circle to Graham's Ferry Road, and then Villaboa Drive up to Beckman, from Coast to Circle to Beckman. And we will, one of the things we noticed is this, we'll add text to show this is Villaboa Drive, just to make sure it's clear where that is, when it comes to you in February. So those are some of the roadways that have been updated. Now I'm going to go through some of the bicycle facilities that have been completed. Tonkin Trail north of Lowry's Primary School. That is, it's the segment right here, to the north. So that, that segment is complete. Coast to Circle, basically the, kind of the segment, pretty much all the way around, the bicycle facilities have been completed on Coast to Circle. Barber Street from Coast to Circle to Graham's Ferry, right here. Villaboa Drive from Coast to Circle to Beckman, the bicycle facilities have been completed from Canyon Creek Road, I'm sorry, on Canyon Creek Road from Town Center Loop East. So right here, this segment, the bicycle facilities has been, have been completed. Willamette Way East to Wilsonville Road has been completed. Barber Street from Montebello to Kinsman. So it's, again, the bridge section. And then Kinsman Road from Barber to Beckman has been completed. And finally, the multi-use path through Etowes Park, which was, let's see. Oh, there it is, right there, the segment. It's not fully complete, but a portion of that has been completed. And so that's really kind of a summary of the Basalt Creek and other TSP amendment cleanup that we've identified with city staff. And I'm happy, that's the conclusion of my presentation, and be happy to answer any questions you have.
The city has been busy.
Yes, yeah. I thought, over two and a half years, it's pretty impressive of all the, all the infrastructure and connectivity that's been added during that time.
So these amendments are really a recognition of changes which have been, have taken place or have been approved to take place.
Correct. Yeah, and really, the intent of a lot of the cleanup is just to show right now, currently, what exists, what's been done.
Very good, thank you.
Yes.
Anything additional?
That's it from our team. If there's no more discussion from the Planning Commission on the content we've presented, then I think staff has good direction on revisiting the Goal 9 summary that we did and looking at the language of Policy C in the, in the implementation measure section we were talking about, and aligning that with Policy M, and providing you with some clarity on that, and making changes if needed. And then also to better align our implementation measure M with the high-tech description, and making sure that that area is described as it is in the concept plan.
Very good.
And that that is what we will bring back to you in February for adoption.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a nearly historical occasion where we're moving right along and getting ahead of schedule. of schedule. The C Council Action Minutes have been distributed. Does anyone have any comments or questions to be conveyed back to council? Once again, I find the, this format of information from council to be very useful. And that brings us to our now 2019 work program. I see a lot of blank cells here. I'm sure that those are going to be filled.
Well, as you know, the work program is often changing constantly, but your first few months are very busy and very full. We have three hearings that will be taking place likely by the end of March. So, and then we know we'll be kicking off as soon as that wraps up, the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan and a couple other programs that are, projects that are in-house. There's going to be more time where I need to sit down with some of the project managers for these and pencil them out a little bit better, but your first quarter of 2019 is already full.
Miranda, could you give us a recap of what we should be expecting in January with the Town Center Plan?
Yes, so with the Town Center Plan, we, you will get a draft of the actual Town Center Plan document. So up to this point in time, you have seen all of the pieces essentially of the plan. We've walked through with you the land use plan and the community design concept that we've arrived at with the community, what those different land use designations are. We've done the traffic analysis for that. We've put together, we were with you last time to talk about the implementation measures. So this will actually be pulling all of that together into the plan document. We'll also be providing links to all of the appendices that will be attached to that. One thing that we will do in that is to clarify with you which of those you have already seen. So essentially, which are final and have already been approved through the process and haven't changed, so that you, it's very clear to you which are the items that have been updated since the last time you saw them and in what capacity they've been updated. Primarily, there's only some minor refinements to the transportation traffic analysis, there were some minor amendments to that. There will be an updated development code since the last time we talked to you, and we'll be bringing to you the two outstanding issues with some staff recommendations for you to discuss on those two. But the majority of the work you've seen, and so we'll be very clear on what is new content or updated content, so that will help you to focus your review effort.
What decision points and what kinds of decisions need to be made going down the road?
So in January, you'll be seeing the actual plan document and the updated code, and then the decision coming before you, so there we will get input from you and hopefully final input on those final changes. And then we'd be coming to you in March for adoption of the plan. That would be adoption of the plan, and that, and that would, along with that, we would also be doing the changes, the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan and development code.
At what point will there be a published plan?
So you will have that plan for your January meeting.
Prior to adoption, of course.
Right, so the January meeting is a work session. So you will receive that plan for your January work session, and you'll also receive the updated code for that January work session. So you'll have an opportunity to review all of that, and we'll have an opportunity to discuss it in January. If it gets updated, you will then receive the updated document prior to your March hearing date.
So will we be endorsing a document and sending it on to council following the March meeting?
So the March hearing would be when you would consider a resolution that would recommend adoption to the city council.
And at some point after that, there will be a published plan?
The council would then receive that same document that you would have provided recommendation on for their consideration at a public hearing. If that is adopted, then that plan would be finalized or published as is adopted. I also would like to share that when you receive the, that in January, we will also be publishing a plan online. We will be using an online format to provide information back to the community in a much more abridged format. So anyone in the community will be able to access the full plan that we'll be sharing with all of you, but in addition to that, there will be kind of an abridged summary that is very easily digestible for people to kind of scroll through and look at, for those who don't necessarily want to get into all the nitty-gritty details that we love to live in. And that will also be available in January to the public.
When did we begin this?
So we began this with the public in February of 2017. So we'll be landing right at the two-year mark with them, which is about what we told them, which makes me feel pretty good. But we've been working on this longer, as you know. We started the process with the consultant team about five months before that to pull together the work plans and do a lot of the initial analysis and gathering of information and pulling together the public engagement plan. And I think we started about a year before that in terms of putting together the grant application that went to Metro.
Seems very quick. We've done a lot of work in a short time.
We have done a lot of work. It feels like a long time to me, but.
Anything else for the good of the order? Anything from staff?
Happy holidays, everybody.
Then we are adjourned at 6:54.
It's amazing.